All right, so item number fifteen. Announce appointments to the planning commission, the recommended action. Is that the council, city council announced the appointments made at the planning commission, to the planning commission at the special council meeting on August thirty first. Commissioners Maggie Ostrowski was reappointed, Mike Cray was reappointed, and Matt Kamkar was appointed to the planning commission for each for a four-year term ending in two thousand and twenty-five. And I don't think we need to make a vote, that was the result of the. Right?
Right, this is purely just to put it on the official council regular meeting.
All right, thank you to all. And that is done. And Councilmember Resnikov, you may.
I'll recuse at this point and wish you a short even.
You're getting out before we go into the next day, that is definitely not fair. All right. Item number fourteen, the police operations building project delivery method, which is a continuation from the discussion on August seventeenth. It is recommended that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to proceed with the construction of the proposed police operations building using the standard design bid build project delivery method in order to retain a higher level of design control through the preparation of the design documents. And we have a presentation by Public Works Director Caprussa.
Yes, thank you and good evening, almost good morning. So obviously, this is something that the council saw just a few weeks ago and really I don't want to rehash everything that you saw last week, but but council did request that we continue the discussion to try to gain as much additional information as we could that really had to do with how it would affect the budget schedule and staff resource needs for measure, not just for PD but for Measure O in general. And so although we didn't have a lot of time to pull information together, we did pull together what we could and we tried to encapsulate it into the into the report that you have before you, which talks about, you know, largely talks about some differences in schedule that I would like to clarify. I will say that that we did make a statement in there that the city's purchasing ordinance would need to be modified. And I have since been corrected corrected by the city attorney that the modification of the city ordinance would not be necessary because design build is explicitly called out in the California Public Contracts Code. And so there is a process in the public contracts code that we would need to follow that largely, what that really does is that largely defines that we need to update a conflict of interest code that will kind of separate between what the current architectural firm is allowed to do to separate them from becoming part of the design build entity. And that it does require us to do a two-step RFQ RFP process. So the initial part of that would be to con, would be to move through an RFQ process. Cannot talk anymore, to shortlist and identify factors that would be the basis of evaluation and selection and evaluate potential DBEs and put them on a short list of candidate firms, if you will, that we would then use and only use those firms for a second step, which would be an RFP process to actually submit proposals. I should also note that a potential DBE, design build entity could not be shortlisted unless it provides an enforceable commitment to use a skilled and trained workforce, which is typically defined in the contract code as a project labor agreement. And then as that moves forward into the RFP process and we're actually evaluating firms, the city can opt to define what the criteria would be for how the selection would be made. And it could be done on either a low bid or a best value basis, just so long as the components of the best value are defined well in the upfront document. And so we'd have to explain that and obviously have to get some council input about what the various components would be and how they would be valued. So that that additional work probably still means that that the DBE process would take a little bit longer than where we would be with the with your traditional design bid build. In terms of the budget, we tried to give you what the two different scenarios would look like. In essence, the project estimate for based on the knowledge that we have at this point would remain the same. What changes are the allocations between construction, design, and how particularly in the design build scenario that some of the unused, so to speak, design money would roll into the design build contract so that the design build entity completes the design and they are obviously compensated for that as well. And then we also provided you some additional very cursory level of what our project management plan would be based on the time that we had to put this together. So the plan would be to bring a in-house project manager forward as a as an employee and that we would still contemplate going outside with construction management firms. However, not knowing what sort of construction management firm we're looking for until this decision made is made would help us significantly. So we would need to know if we're hiring firms to help us manage a project like the library, which will be design bid build, or will we need a construction management firm with some design build experience as well if we go in that direction with the police building? So at this point, we're really looking to see if the council has enough information to maybe move forward with their discussion. And I should point out also that in any event, we would have to do a contract amendment with the current design firm LPA to either move into doing to completing bridging documents that would be used for a design build process or to move forward with the completing of the construction drawings for the more traditional design bid build process. And with that, I will stop, probably gone on a little too long and open it up for council questions and discussion.
Not as long as you sometimes do, Todd.
Well, I'm tired.
All right. We have questions from Councilwoman Landry and the council member Bybee.
Thank you, Todd. It is getting late, so you were talking before about the RFQ RFP. And did you say DBE as in disadvantaged business enterprise or did you say DBB?
No, I'm sorry, that's why I think I used DBE about three times before I told you what it. The DBE without I'm referring to is the design build entity.
Okay, so I wanted to clarify.
Yes.
And when you said RFQ, it was in reference to design bid build, not necessarily RFQs to pre-qualify for low bid.
That is what it was.
I said RFQ for a design build process because that is defined in the in the state contracts code. We are we are not precluded from doing the same thing on a design bid build. We know we could pre-qualify contractors as well. We're not required to, but it's certainly an option that we could undertake under that process as well.
I strongly encourage that.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Bybee and then Councilmember Lopez.
I wanted to clarify probably with Bill. On if this council went with the design build process, we would have to amend the city's conflict of interest code, which is an ordinance amendment, is that correct, Bill? Or would we just have to amend the classification, which you could do by resolution?
Um, actually, it's probably neither of those. It would be a separate conflict of interest policy that relates specifically to the design build procedure.
But would it be an ordinance with the first and second reading and?
It does not, it does not need to be an ordinance, no.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you. Todd, Director Caprussa, so I heard the your breakdown of costs and it makes sense being your presentation. Can you just square that with me for me with the fiscal impact on page? Where am I now? Packet page two hundred and forty-one. And can you help me understand if the two hundred and fifty thousand for design build would be on top of the other costs that are discussed there?
Well, I need to kind of look back and see how we said this. We've got a current contract with LPA for roughly nine hundred and eighty thousand, right? So that's that's the current contract. So we are at the point where we know we're going to need to do an amendment with them, one way or the other. So we're at this decision point. If we go with the design build methodology, we would do an amendment and these would have to be negotiated, right? So we'd still have to work with them on the amendment. If we do the design build methodology, it's looking like that would be based, that would be an approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollar amendment to that nine hundred and eighty thousand, additional to the nine eighty to have LPA take us through the bridging documents. If we stick with the traditional design bid build, we don't do the two fifty amendment, we do approximately a one point three million dollar amendment to take them all the way through the completion of construction drawings. And so when you look at the table, I know, and this is kind of hard to piece back together, but under design and planning for each one. If you look at the first table first, which is the design bid build, that two hundred, two point three million is really the nine eighty plus one point three. So we rounded it to two point three. And in the design build table down below, beginning of top, top of packet page two thirty-one, that is really the nine eighty plus two fifty that we referenced in the fiscal impact paragraph. So hopefully that, I mean, I know it's a lot of numbers to kind of follow through and we tried to keep the tables, you know, relatively simple in general, but there's a little bit of detail that went into each of those numbers too. Hope that helps.
I understand, thank you. And just to repeat a point that you make, so you're you now believe that design build would take longer than design bid build?
Well, I think that it would. How much is uncertain because, you know, this is a process that that on top of everything else, it's not a process that we followed before. So we don't really have a staff resource or even a contractual resource at this point that can take the lead on this for us. So we're still kind of searching for that resource, to be quite honest. And 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 then as the city attorney weighed in on that there are some administrative things that have to happen. I don't know that those will necessarily add weeks and weeks to the schedule. But they'll add a little bit of time and there'll probably be a learning curve, which is hard to put, hard to give you a precise number on. But what the other thing that this really does is going with design build, it looks like we're going to be called upon sooner as a city, whether that means staff and council to kind of make some final decisions earlier in the process. Because with bridging documents and that process, you know, we've kind of got to nail those things down earlier where with the design bid build, what you might see as the rough equivalent to bridging documents at sixty-five percent level, if we brought you back sixty-five percent construction drawings, the council could still make some modifications and say, well, we like this or we don't like this or take this out or add that. So you do kind of retain some decision making a little bit longer into the process. So I think the design build process is going to really, you know, kind of put us all to the test to come to consensus or, you know, earlier than than otherwise.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I have quite a bit to say, but it's more in discussion, not in question, so I will defer. And if no one else has any questions, we will open the public hearing. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak?
I had one speaker earlier this evening, but I no longer have them on the line.
So no, I'm sorry about that, apologies. It's been a very full agenda. Okay, so we will close the public hearing and bring it, the discussion back to council. And I'm going to try and move the conversation along. Last week, when I was talking with the city manager about the project, we were going over some costs and different things and we went over some more today and I do want to cover some of that later. But the city manager mentioned that Cupertino had just done a design build for their library project. And we're very gung ho and very happy about it. And it kind of, as you know, rang a bell with me because design build is the preferred method for public projects. So I contacted the mayor, Darcy Paul, and asked him if he could send me some information. I was particularly asking to see his staff report and resolution for what Todd is kind of talking about somewhat differently tonight perhaps, but it was to allow the city of Cupertino to do a design build project. And so he, Darcy, put me in touch with their project deputy city manager and was extremely helpful and has provided me with the links for you, for the city to all of their documents, their resolutions and all of their bid documents. So it would help as a solid example of what we mean when we talk about bridging documents. And the reason that I thought that was important is that when you do design bid build, you, and I'm picking numbers out of thin air, you might do a hundred and twenty drawings, but when you do design bid, you do maybe eighty, eighty-five drawings. That's because the design build entity has on board the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, civil, whatever. Mechanical and electrical and plumbing typically don't do extensive drawings. They do their shop drawings, they do the drawings by which they're going to be building the building. So it's a shortcut, it eliminates a great deal of effort and design fee and so forth. So we talked and I'm just going to summarize here what she said. In addition to sending the staff report and the bid documents, she recommended that they have had a great deal of success and positive results from having a project manager CM company, one company that provides staff that is the PM, but also staff that is the CM. She said it was very important early on for them to recognize the reticence of staff because design build is not something that staff, even if they've done buildings, was particularly comfortable with. She also strongly recommended hiring a design build attorney so that the documents could be very carefully structured because a lot of things that people have said here talks about the design continuing to design. I would also argue that, my assessment is that there's very little to be designed after a certain point. What concerned me, and I mentioned this to staff, I sent a memo that said we're going to be talking about mechanical systems, electrical systems, all electric buildings that our staff are not familiar with. And we need to make sure we have help with them knowing what these systems are, how they are going to evaluate the design intent and accomplishment of those and how that they're going to work it into their long-term maintenance plans. Because this is a big new building that has to fit into the long-term plans of the city in terms of staffing. So what was interesting is they did go out to design build, they did use bridging documents, they did go out with a pre-qualified list and they had four bidders. One bidder came in high, one bidder came in low, another bidder came in with an all-new design because they thought they could do it better. And then the fourth bidder came in and said, we will give you exactly what your drawings want. Your documents are clear, your drawings are clear, we know what you want and we can do it. They just said categorically, you will get exactly what your drawings and specifications require. So in general, a design build is a preferred project delivery method because, and this is what I said last time, there is surety in the budget and in the schedule. When you go for design bid build, there is no guarantee that the project will come in at the project budget amount and you may have to go out and rebid it, particularly in this market, that's a challenge, but that's one of the advantages. In a design bid build, the risk of a contractor coming in as a low bidder is always because they found a glitch in the drawings and they know that they will make their profit with change orders. Okay, that is the nature of the professional business. So I gave myself, as I often do, you know, I say this, I gave myself a hard talking to. We do not, the city does not have a project manager onboard now, construction manager onboard now. And to go forward without a project manager, project management, construction manager team, which I strongly recommend is a consultant company, not an individual at this stage of our design process at DD. I think as much as I really feel design build is the right approach for the city, given that we do not have management staff, there's no way to have anyone provide direction to the design, to the consultant LPA to produce bridging documents. There's no one onboard to take on that responsibility. So I am very, very, very reluctantly saying that the LPA, the design team knows what they have to do to produce design bid build drawings. So that gives the city a grace period to get a new project manager, construction management company onboard and keep the project moving. Which at this point, I feel like we're against the wall, we're in a corner. We have to keep the project moving. So that is why I am changing, if you will, or moving to a decision tonight to go for the design bid build process because I think we have no other viable option. And I really, really hope that the council will do two things. One, will ask staff to, if they wish to continue to go out to an individual person to be on the city's payroll, fine. But rather than run the risk of not finding the right person, that they concurrently go out with a request for services for a project manager CM company and they could start with the scope of work that Cupertino used just to get something moving, maybe even start with the list of where they shortlisted kind of thing. We, that is our critical path item right now is to get someone onboard to manage the project. And the second, so that was my first request. And my second request for council support is I appreciate that staff made a valiant effort to try and put the construction cost estimate together. I went over it with the city manager this afternoon and I would ask that staff, take a look at the budget that they put together on December first of two thousand and twenty and use that format and fill out that format and add the column to what they did in December first of two thousand and twenty to where the cost estimates are now and include all the costs. For example, the costs reflected in the budget did not appear to include where the survey was being paid for, where hazmat was, evaluation and removal was being paid for, where the arborist came from funding, where the sequoia funding came from. Confirming that the sewer water and power connections and permit fees were all covered in those estimates, it was not clear. The, there was no budget for overall site work that might need to be done. The construction contingencies, I thought we talked a while ago with the lost library presentation that Abe gave an excellent discussion with great clarity on what the construction contingency is. It's really a project contingency. So those numbers need to come out of the project budgets that are in this report tonight. And that is consistent with what was done in December of two thousand and twenty. There's a question of moving expenses, there's the permanent parking, the temporary parking. There's a lot of other types of items all need to be identified so that we are sure that the project is coming in at the fifty million dollar mark. What we have in front of us tonight does not answer that question for me. So I would ask that when we get the presentation in two weeks with the DD for the PD, we get a full budget of the Measure O project at the same time. So that's, that's where I am. Councilwoman Landry.
Yes. I'll cut to the chase real quickly. I want to go low bid, design bid build. But I take note of what Liz said about that we didn't get our ducks in order prior to this. We're kind of being forced to go low bid because we didn't get our ducks in order prior to this conversation. And I don't want to keep moving forward that way. I, Liz and I both have been pushing very hard. Where's the master plan? Where's the total budget? What's coming out of the ten million? What work is not in Measure O that still needs to be done, like the sidewalk by the bus stop, like the parking lot? The budget summary on page two fifty, it's not clear to me still where this ten million, what, how do we get to twenty-eight million? The staffing plan, so we've made some missteps along the way, which we've done collectively as a group. But we need to stop making those missteps. We need to prepare what we need to to keep moving forward as fast as we can but as efficiently and as thoughtful as we can. This building is going to last for seventy years. We got bond that we're responsible for fiscally to our voters and our community. So I, I'm in the court of low bid at this point and, but let's get the budget resolved at our next meeting. Let's make it clear what's in PD, library, what's not in there, what's not in Measure O and keep moving forward.
Please don't keep saying low bid.
I'm sorry, it's so confusing.
Don't say low bid.
DBE, no, DBE is the other guy, DBB, okay. It's easier to say low bid. Oh, and then the last thing is we really need to pre-qualify contractors for low, for the design bid build. Because on design bid build, you get the bid, that's the lowest bid without any qualifications to that bid. So we do need to implement that process and get RFQs and start shortlisting contractors and their subs.
Councilmember Bybee.
So I continue to support the DBB process. I don't really see that there's any advantage in doing the DB process. According to the staff report, the project delivery schedules are pretty similar. The budget is going to be the same in the end. And that the DB method is going to extend it out a few, a few weeks. And and we have to have the bridging documents done sooner than sooner than later. And I just don't think we're ready to do that, so I continue to support the DBB.
Councilmember Lopez, your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm supportive of it as well. When we originally discussed this item, based off that staff report and the discussions with with staff that came out of that, it was my impression that there is a bit more of a stark difference in both budget and delivery date. And now hearing the information tonight, which is what what I have to go off of. I'm in favor of moving forward with design bid build. The information to, tonight, which is what, what I have to go off of, I, I'm in favor of moving forward with design bid build.
I, I will, I will give you my assessment that the. Cautionary tale of the staff report on design bid, I don't think. I properly identifies where the cost savings and time savings could be. But I do think it's complicated by the fact that there's no staff experience. And it's hard, it's hard to put an accurate comparison in, which is why I'm going to the design bid build process.
Can I make a motion real quick before we change our minds? Ready? Okay, I make a motion that the city adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager. To proceed with the construction of the proposed police operations building. Using the standard design bid build project delivery method. In order to retain a high level of design control throughout the preparation of design documents. And I'd like to add that we pre-qualify, do a RFQ pre-qualifying process for the contractors.
And I would like to offer a friendly amendment, which is that. That the project management and construction management be provided through a solicitation. Of a firm to provide both services. Doesn't preclude staff from going out to get an individual project manager, but it gives us a backup. And, and what I think is ultimately time-wise is going to be a better approach.
So to add to the motion, it would be for staff to start the process to retain a construction management company.
A, a project manager, construction management company together. One company.
Yes.
So we have a motion by Councilwoman Landry.
Well, I'll second it for the purpose of discussion, could, could staff respond to that second part of the motion? Is that?
Well, I, yeah, I, I guess I'm. I, I'm a little perplexed to, to, to be honest, and it, and it may be the hour of the day. So I certainly understand the first part of the motion and the pre-qualification. Is the second part about the PM and the CM is to not hire an employee, but to do this all contractually, is that direction? I, I would, I would have to, I have some, I, I don't know that we could operate like that, to be honest, because at this point, not having an in-house. Resource for measure O puts us all in an untenable position. Even for the information that you're asking to bring back to council in two weeks, I, there's no one here to do that work.
You're.
Be brutally honest.
So you're making an assumption, I think, Todd.
Well, I'm asking a question too.
Yeah, I understand, that's why we have the information from Cupertino, and it's a starting point.
Well, I, if I could add, I mean, I, I, see, what's interesting about this, I, I don't get to add, you know, I've had discussions with Cupertino as well. And when I spoke to their public works department, my understanding is they have an in-house project manager on that project as well as a CM firm. So you and I are not getting the consistent information.
Can I clarify the motion, Liz? I did not think we were precluding an in-house staff.
We were not.
With the, the, the motion was to bring in a project manager, construction manager firm. But that does not preclude you from hiring a staff member.
Right.
That's my understanding of my motion. So you, yes, you would still hire a staff because you need the internal person.
If, if it turns out that you need it. So I, Todd, you are correct. They do have an in-house project manager. But they also have a. A combined project manager, construction management company.
I got that information as well.
Okay.
Yes.
So the sooner we get out with having some type of expertise in-house. To move the contract documents forward. To evaluate the mechanical and electrical and plumbing systems that staff can understand what they're being asked. To maintain in the years to come. All of that knowledge needs to be provided, and hiring an in-house project manager will not achieve that.
No, I, I would, I would concur with you, I, I, I completely agree with what you're saying, I, I, I guess my point is, is. When it comes down to, to having somebody who can, you know, go through the budget and provide the level of detail that council is looking for. And I start to identify other aspects of the civic center complex that may need improvement that we don't have budgeted. That's a resource that we don't have.
And that's what the construction management, project manager group company can do.
Okay, so I, I guess I.
They're a, they're a group, so let me.
No, I, I, I.
They represent the city's interest.
Yeah, I, I, I get, I think I understand that part, in, in my conversations with the city manager though, I, I think we were. Trying to understand if measure O funds could be used to assess the entire site for things that would, for. And ultimately result in projects that might not be funded by measure O.
Let me put it this way, that information needs to be determined for the project to move forward, no matter what. So there needs to be a game plan to answer that question. I think, Todd, you said a couple of times tonight that we don't have the in-house expertise to move the project forward.
Well, that, that's part of, but part of what I said is we have no capacity either. I mean, the only resources on measure O are on this call right now.
So, so rather than split hairs, we, we acknowledge coming from whatever position we're evaluating the situation. There needs to be bodies brought in with the skill sets to do what needs to be done.
Yes.
And what I was asking for Councilwoman Landry to put on her motion. Was a clarity that the council is looking for staff to have. The skilled.
Yes.
Capacity as soon as possible. And it may be one person, it may be a company, corporation, it may be a combination of the two. But unless we start acting on all of that. We will, even if we go design bid build and everything goes right, if we don't have that skill set and literally body capacity. We're not going to be successful, so I'm just emphasizing we need to do that.
If I can jump in, Madam Mayor, I, I think that was well said, I think we all agree that we need key staff here. And we're going to pursue as quickly as we can to pull that in place, both in-house and contract staff to support that. I think that's the key, is not waiting for one or the other. And then following the other processes, trying to bring people onboard as quickly as possible, understanding our, our constraints with, with resources. To even get that work. That RFP out, but our effort would be to bring on those resources as quickly as possible.
Well, to be, I. I'm, I'm, I'm a little overdone on the phrase as quickly as possible. So I'm just putting out there that to me, we are behind the eight ball, and we need to get it taken care of. Whatever it needs to get it done, it needs to get done. I don't think it's fair to, to public works, if nothing else. Can we vote now?
So if I, if I understand correctly, it's, the motion includes directions to staff. To hire a project manager, in-house project manager. And supplement that with some type of contract. Management.
It's instruction management.
Is that?
Project management.
I'm probably trying, I'm probably trying to be too technical, and I don't mean to be, there's a need to staff the project.
And, and I, I understand that, but I don't know that I, as a council member, should be telling the public works director and the city manager how to staff the project. I mean, it's, it's really up to them, they're, they're, we, we've agreed that we need a project manager. And the rest of the level of expertise that's needed, that they need, that, that has to be part of their, their. Job.
So forgive me, but I don't think that that's doable. I don't, I, I, I feel very strongly that. That staff needs to know that council recognizes. That staffing support is needed as quickly as possible. And. If, if you feel like I'm, I'm being too, too specific, that I, I'll back off of it, I can just tell you that. This is what I've learned, this is what I explored, to try and articulate why I'm concerned about the budget. Why I'm concerned about the project, why I feel forced, forced into a corner to go design bid build. We do not have the staff that would allow us to go design build. And if we don't have that, then we've got to have the right staff to make sure the design bid process, build process goes forward. Correctly and successfully. It's all I'm looking for, I just want to make sure that we've got all the right support and pieces in place for the projects to go forward successfully. And I, I think it's appropriate that council make that statement.
Now can we vote?
Except to Councilmember Bybee, she seconded it, but she's withholding until the discussion's complete.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I understand that we need to have the. The level of expertise in, in all phases of the, of the, of the project management. But again, it's really up to the staff to, to decide and determine what their needs are. And who, who they need on staff to, to accomplish that. And, and I, I'm, I'm not really feeling confident here, the, the public works director and the city manager agree with the motion. And I want everybody to be on the same page and support this.
I, I, I understand, I, I, and I'm not trying to pursue the discussion for the sake of the discussion. We have effectively not had a project manager. For, for more than a year. And the project has suffered because of that.
Well, that, that's your opinion.
Well, I've had concurrence from staff.
Okay, can we move forward if I take the last part off of?
Sorry. Yeah, can I understand better from staff what the. What, 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 what the issue is with, with more resources, more staff resources on, on the project?
Well, I, you know, and I, I don't want to put words in people's mouth, I think the concern is if we're going forward and doing a recruitment for a project manager for an internal resource. I think it's important, I, you hear public works director Caperso say it's important to have an internal resource, someone that really owns it, and that would be our goal. I, I think the concern is if we go through that process and we go through interviews, and we end up with, with. Someone that we're not satisfied with, that can't do the job, then we're stuck with trying to fill that through contract. And can we gain something by looking at those other resources, kind of parallel to that to cover our bases? Should that occur, that, that, that we can fill without, without losing a heartbeat. Weeks down the road. And, and I think that's a concern, I, I think the, the council member Bybee's comment, it is our intent to appropriately staff this, we will appropriately staff it. And if we can't get internal resources, we will look to contract staff to, to support that. And, and we were planning to look at construction firms already, so we're committed, I hear the council's concern. To keep this moving, and we're committed to keep it moving too, but I, I think to your, to your question, Councilmember Lopez, that, that, that would be the concern.
So, so that, that makes sense to me, but what, what, what I heard from the mayor's suggestion and, and, you know, please. Correct me, or mayor, feel free to jump in if I'm wrong, is that those processes could happen in, in parallel, so is, is that inconsistent with?
I'm agreeing, they should, they should happen in parallel, and, and no small measure, because staff is recommending ex-construction management company for the project. So we need to move all of those resources as quickly as possible to have them ready to get onto the project when they're needed.
So with those clarifications in here, and Director Caperso, please feel free to jump in if, if there's anything you, you'd like to add to that.
No, I, I think, I think we're all on the same page, honestly, I mean, I think that we all agree at some level that, that we need to get the right resources. Here and work on this project, because I think we're all at a point where. We recognize that in order to keep it moving forward, we, we are going to need the appropriate resources, not just in terms of overall project management. But as the mayor correctly pointed out, some very specific technical resources that we're going to need along the way as well. So I think that we all agree, and, and, and maybe we're working around each other on, on how to say it. I mean, you, you know, in my conversations with the city manager, it's my recommendation that we have a. What you might term more of, 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 of a city resource that, you know, owns and manages the project from the city perspective. But certainly, I think a lot to what the mayor is saying, I mean, we, we need resources above and beyond that too. That will, that will manage, you know, probably more so than nuts and bolts and technical sides of the projects. That should, should probably appropriately not be employees, we should not be hiring city employees for that purpose. So it's really coming down to what I view as a combination of it, some in-house, in-house resources. And some consultant resources, and it's going to take a collection of that. You know, and it's even hard to say, you know, if, if those resources will be in any, in common to PD and the library. Because now that we're going with a similar process, there may be some efficiency there from a project and construction management. But, but we may find when we put out the, on RFQ and on RFP. That there's enough differences that we, that we decide to go with, with two different firms, I mean, so it's really all kind of up in the air for what, what we, what we. What, I think we know what we want, but we don't know what that's going to like until we test the market, both as, as a, as a recruitment and as, as an RFP. Because we need to see what's out there and how soon we can bring those resources back to the, to the project.
So, so thank you, I appreciate the clarification and, and the discussion. I'm supportive of the amendment, because I want to see, I want to make sure staff feels supported and has the resources they, they, they need. You know, trusting your judgment and gratitude to where we've gotten to, to the stage, just making sure we can get across the finish line.
Appreciate that, thank you.
So Councilmember Bybee, would you like to go forward with your second, or would you like to?
Yeah, yeah, I, I'll, let's call for the, for the vote.
Okay. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Bybee.
Hi.
Councilwoman Landry.
Hi.
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Resnick Office recused, Mayor Givens.
Hi. Thank you.
You guys.
Thank you. And I thank you all for making a long meeting be very productive tonight, so thank you for your sticking in. With me doing what needed to get done. Anybody have anything else we need? Okay, night, everybody, thank you.